I'll go ahead and talk over our regular meetings for July.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Just checking these.
I'm awake.
We will be going into closed session. It's already closed, partners.
Mr. Mayor, we just performed a roll call. Council Agency Authority Member Torres, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor, Council Agency Authority Member Warren is excused, Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Van, Mayor Chairman Schaubert, and Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments on closed session items.
I would say that going into the speech, so go ahead and let's hear it to the secret chambers.
We now to the other two closed session at five thirty two P M.
All right. First of the topic is.
Absolutely, Mayor and Council. We have two items on closed session today. The first is conference with legal counsel regarding litigation under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one, a case existing in the Pacific Residence Association versus Stanton. The other item is conference with real property negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight regarding multiple properties on Tina Way and Pacific Avenue as listed on the agenda. Thank you.
I would like to enter this one up for the session.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
There's nothing to watch. If you're all pleased, you're me.
A, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor. Council Agency Authority Member Torres. Council Agency Authority Member Warren is excused, Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Van, and Mayor Chairman Schaubert. You're all the same minds that I was trying to hold.
Okay, it is our city project.
Thank you for standing right hand over your head at any P M.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ten thousand, one nation under God, indivisible, earth and justice.
City sponsorship program update.
Presentation by Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening we have an update on the city sponsorship program. Program, as you recall, was implemented last August in twenty twenty two. And city council approved updates to existing policies in an effort to promote transparency, equity, efficiency, and the use of city facilities, city sponsorships, and city own equipment. Council emphasized and recognizes the value of partnering with other agencies and organizations and providing services that benefit the community and its residents to support those organizations to provide valuable community services that the cities otherwise unable to provide. The fee waiver guidelines and sponsorship policies were updated to meet needs. Council directed staff to bring sponsorship requests for city council approval and proceed administratively with the fee waiver requests. A total of five sponsorships and seven fee waiver requests were approved throughout fiscal year for a total in kind contribution of three thousand dollars seven hundred, three thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. I have a list here of all of the fee waivers. We have the community groups that reached out. We have the Stanton Community Foundation, Stanton Lions Club, Supervisor Chapey's office, Get In Me's Community Support Group, and Public Cable Television Board. For sponsorships, we also have Stanton Community Foundation, Friends and Families, Youth Assistance Foundation, and the Stanton Community Foundation. The requests vary from waivers of special event permit, essential use permits, support for outreach and marketing, co-sponsors using the city logo, some city equipment like combs, podium, and in general, events. And then happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That was just a presentation from the voluntary consent calendar. And these will be items A. All the way through.
Right up, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, we have them.
They've released, I think, or from the audience. Sure.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, a second by Mayor Lieutenant Van, Lebanon City, Roll Call, Council Agency Authority Member Torres, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor, Mayor Lieutenant Vice Chair Person Van, and Mayor Chairman Schaubert.
Yes, thank you, Ed, for both the carries on business, new business, authorization for customers to attend upcoming events.
Thank you, Mayor. That would be me. Good evening, our mayor and city council members. We have before you this evening authorization for council members to attend upcoming meetings and events. Pursuant to the city's travel reimbursement policy, council member or mayor must receive state council approval prior to the trip. This year will see by G P R. This evening, the state council is being asked to express requests for travel for Mayor Schaubert, Mayor Lieutenant Van, and Councilmember Torres to attend the League of California City Annual Conference and Expo. This is scheduled to be held in Sacramento on September twenty eighth through the twenty second of this year. The recommendation for this evening is that state council find the subject, subject, not subject to C Q, authorize Mayor Schaubert, Mayor Lieutenant Van, and Mayor Councilmember Torres to attend the League of California City Annual Conference and Expo, which that includes staff support and the ability to answer any questions that we have.
Okay, I think that I've already called us, but I didn't. Either Allo, Span, or Tom should be the voting delegates.
Mayor, that's the next item. So that will be, the first item, twelve A is to authorize your attendance, and then twelve B will be to authorize and delegate our voting delegate.
Please, probably, who's saying about me?
Oh, absolutely. So again, just to kind of correlate item twelve B with twelve A, recommended actions for twelve B is to also find that this item is not subject to C Q and to authorize Mayor Schaubert to be the voting delegate and to select an alternate voting delegate. Now, this corresponds with the mayor's appointments to the mayor's appointments to our mayors listing. You are designated as a voting delegate and second one.
Okay, if I recall, we can also ask somebody else to.
Absolutely.
So I'm going to ask Tom to be the voting delegate person at the meeting, and my oldest, uh, powers. Okay, any questions? Anybody from the audience who'd like to discuss this item? Okay, I make a motion to be approved.
Good, second. Second. All favors?
Aye.
As you vote, hearing that, item passed.
Do you have oral communication from the public, which everybody likes to address this times?
So we don't have anything in the books, but is there any members of the audience?
For the homeless issue of Stanton.
Okay, so one second. The gentleman behind you raises his hand if you come to the voting service. And then we do what I said, use a board, state your name for the record, and then you do have three minutes to address the council. Thank you, sir.
Where do I?
Oh, you're great. I saw your hand shoot up very quickly.
I came last week, last month, for the day for C R again, and I don't see no result, so I want to see what's coming up, what's gonna happen. I said today and yesterday, they kind of reduced the noise. But it's kind of weird, because I'm getting on when I come to the meeting. So, and I kind of know the letter for our request for my partner car in the center of my, my garage. So I can modify this guy's over there, C R. So I gotta notify, and the end of the notify to C R, so I'm on what's going on.
I think I can help you with that. We have a log, and so if, at the end of the meeting, if you give us the date and times, we'd be happy to visit our log and review it, and if you compare that information, we'll get that right back to you. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Yes, sir, please come up.
Thank you. Thank you. Your name is Dagmo, Risti, for the record. We're here today for the rising concern of the homeless situation on Garden Grove Boulevard at the eighty one hundred block. They have a huge encampment there. We've notified Stanton Sheriff Department many times. They have also encamped inside the church there to the point where we have to put a fence so that they don't encamp on the grounds. And now they're blocking the street. They're blocking the sidewalk. And a lot of time when we leave, they have lewd acts, lewd activities. Some of them are even indecent. And the children see that. We've contacted the Sheriff Department, and it seems like an ongoing battle that we're not winning. And our concern is that it's going to start to become like it is in Los Angeles, that we're not going to be able to walk on the streets. About a week ago, there was one man drunk in public harassing a young Asian lady. We know her from church. And he was trying to assault her. I was fortunate enough to be pulling out of my house when he was doing it. She started to scream for help. I immediately started to try to help her and get the guy away from her. He will not leave, so we called the police. Two days later, I see him on the same street with a drink in his hand, walking around. We really need help on Garden Grove Boulevard. The Garden Grove Inn is a breeding place for them. The Shell Gas Station, no, the Chevron, I'm sorry, the Chevron Gas Station. The Walmart has had to hire a security guard from having been moved inside of the Walmart at all times of the day. The Taco Bell, there was a big attack at the Taco Bell where one of the migrants, one of the homeless, started attacking the customers in line at the drive-thru, and it's getting really bad to the point where we want to move, but it's difficult to move. And even if we do move, our neighbors and our friends that live here are stuck with this. So we throw ourselves on the mercy of Stanton, of the city of Stanton, and all its constituents, to please help us. And whatever we can do to help, we look.
Well, exactly where you're located.
So I've been tracking the Stanton Garden Grove border. It's Fern.
Now, where's your church?
Our church is on the Garden Grove side.
Okay, that's to the east.
It's eighty twenty two Garden Grove Boulevard.
Is it before Dale or gas Dale?
It's before Dale.
It's some, it's right next to where that restaurant, or it's hotel, or that motel thing.
That one's at the eighty one hundred. That's on the Stanton side. So it's the Stanton side where they're congregating. They do try to congregate at our church, but it's only one or two. On the Stanton side of the eighty one hundred block of the church, there's a whole, you know, brigade of them. There's a whole, like, I don't know, encampment.
Yeah, we're, I'll be honest with you, I'm aware of that. I know they have a lot. We have a lot of problems with that because the city of Garden Grove hasn't got their activity yet. They're working on. The city of Westminster doesn't have their act together. And therefore, when they push all those people around, especially after the twenty two freeway, they come to Stanton.
Yeah.
And as soon as we have that indication, we send our people out.
Yeah.
We just cleared that area up about the time you were complaining recently because there was a large confrontation by the Suzuki dealership, which is just east of the center there. And we're able to clear it out at that particular point. Problem is, if your neighbors don't have a program, then we're gonna have that problem. And so if they start enforcing it, we're gonna have that problem. We do, are very proactive on our side, and we will continue to do so, especially on Fern, Dale, and by the gas station.
Yeah.
On the Stanton side. It's very difficult for us, although we have a great working relationship with the Garden Grove, Garden Grove Police Department. And, you know, they've been very cooperative and great. We have our public sanity director who's aware of it. We have our community police who's aware of it. And now that you've arrived, our kitchen, we will continue to do everything we can to.
It's that, your honor, it's that Garden Grove Inn, the hotel there, is, it's a breeding place for them. We pass by there every day because of work and freeway. And when they can't pay their rent, we also try to go out there and help them, food and clothing and things. But we found out that when they can't pay their rent at the Garden Grove Inn, they're being pushed out to the street, and they're living on the street. And so they can, they can help to pay the rent, and then they go back in, and the cycle continues. So it's housing that's, you know, needed. And shelters, they don't want them because they're not allowed to do, there are drugs in the shelter. I'm just gonna be honest with you. A lot of them are on addicted to drugs, and they, they're not allowed to do drugs in shelters, but they are allowed to do them in the inn. So we've been dealing with this for several years, and it's just overwhelming us. We can't, we're not, we're not.
I think that it is. I think that it is. I'm sure it's.
I don't know. I don't know whose it is, but Garden Grove Inn is Patch Beach Boulevard, on Garden Grove Boulevard.
I'm not sure, but I think we.
There's like one little area where it's standing, and then it turned back down to Garden Grove Boulevard.
Actually, the only location mentioned that is in Stanton is that Walmart. We're, we're in that shopping center daily, and that was the property manager today. Everything else that was mentioned is in the city.
Even the eighty one hundred.
The citizens at.
One of Garden Grove.
Eighty one hundred Garden Grove is in Garden Grove, Garden Grove Inn is in Garden Grove. The only part mentioned by the mayor, when sometimes if they cross Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden, Garden Grove and Fern, that is us. So we, we're there almost daily, but the, everything, you mentioned the only, the Walmart Center that, you mentioned they hired security, which is true. Other than that, everything you mentioned is in Garden Grove.
So when I call Garden Grove, they say it's you guys. This is why I'm here. And then when I come here, they say it's Garden Grove, so.
Well, yeah, they can say, they can say whatever they want. We have probably the best outreach and enforcement for our county of Orange, and we will continue to take care of business. I'm very sorry that we have no jurisdiction on your side of the street. However, I will tell you, I think I did receive a call from the county that they purchased one of those motels that was over there, and it's maybe converted. It's my hope that they'll get the other two, which will make life for not only you, but also for us, much better.
Right. My fear is that it's gonna start to become like Los Angeles. And Los Angeles was like Orange County at one time. But now it's overrun, and no one goes there. Downtown L A is overrun by homelessness and vacancy and alcohol and drug abuse. So.
And you're absolutely right. We don't want that in Garden Grove. We don't want it in Stanton. We don't want it in Orange County. And this is my thirteenth year doing this. And I'm aware of everything you're talking about. Our council is aware of it that you're talking about. And we will continue our efforts to help Garden Grove this weekend.
Yeah, like you said, you know, if we could work hand in hand with Stanton and Garden Grove and Westminster, what I see is the homeless kind of figured it out that there is that, that, that hole in the chain, and they're kind of getting through that crack in the chain, and they're staying where they know no one will come after them.
We have a good policy in our town. If you have a warrant, we arrest you. If you're breaking the law, we arrest you. If you are doing something illegal, we arrest you. We're not, we're not, just not doing that anymore. Also, if you need help, we help. If you want to go somewhere and get a housing, we help you. If you need relocated and get treatment, we help you. Our denial rate is ninety nine percent right now. We have gone through every homeless person in the city of Stanton, and we've now down to where we're about ninety nine percent of people say no, because they don't want to end up drunk. They don't want to follow rules. And that's the way it is right now.
That's right. That's right.
But we're successful on the others.
Yeah, so I thank you guys for your time. Just wanted to bring this up, and hopefully that we could get some help because it is really, you know, hurting.
You see Chief over there?
Yes.
He's the best for doing this, and he's aware of it. And if we give a little extra help, if we can get away with cheating, helping Garden Grove would do it all right.
Sounds good, man. Thank you, Mayor. You're welcome, great to hear it, guys.
Anybody else? Anyway, thank both you gentlemen for coming. I would really appreciate it. We always like to hear from people who's working on the community. Is there anybody else? Close of our hearing. Nobody great communications. Mayor, authority to initiate a business. We got the fifteen announcements. Appreciate reading.
So I am spoken to our city attorney of all, or city attorney officer, the attorney. My neighborhood started experiencing a lot of Catholic, Catholic converter thefts. So I'd like to gem dice how you can more proactive prevent these sort of thefts. Service campaign, or etching, or ordinance change, or whatever, whatever the options are, to help me make this decision.
All right, thank you, Dr. Van.
Let's get on the agenda first.
I'd like to maybe add an item, and that is a leadment of the legal businesses in the city in the process at the opportunities that present themselves. I'd like to probably have that put in a I O in closed session so we can discuss legal opportunities that have been available to the city. Anybody else? Okay, good. Start the session. Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have the ones.
Steve, you seem to be trying to agree.
You're having a hard time with this, too. Thank you.
I'll give the bar for our party to answer. Oh, you can't do that. Okay. Welcome, Chief. We're waiting breathless for you. How much you're out of this? Are you back or are you still out of the state?
I'm still back in Vermont, sir.
How are the floods back there?
The water's starting to recede right now, but there's still some rivers that haven't completely crested and then, but the damage, the localized damage, some of the towns is a pretty extensive, and we have crews out there. We're supporting both the, some FEMA resources and then also some help and assist some of the local nine one one fire departments back there with just searching structures and then evacuations. And then I know they have done some live rescues back here. That's everything for people that were trapped in cars in the middle of floodwaters, who, people stuck on a porch or in our house and couldn't get out and just wanted to escape. So they are, crews are doing good work out here and happy to be back here helping them, support them.
They're all safe and healthy, right? All, all our crew is safe and healthy, right?
Yes, sir.
I see you're broadcasting from the hills, so go ahead.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, the city staff. It's my pleasure to provide you with the following OCFA operational report for the month of June twenty twenty three from the lovely town of Lebanon, New Hampshire. So as far as emergency incidents, responses, the OCFA responded to a total of three hundred and thirty incidents within the city during the month of June twenty twenty three. Twenty two of those were fires. We had two hundred and eighty seven EMS rescue-related and twenty one hazardous condition miscellaneous calls. The OCFA also responded to forty three incidents within the unincorporated areas of Orange County serviced by Fire Station Forty Six. Zero of those were fires, and all forty three of them were actually EMS or rescue-related. There was three incidents that occurred during the month of June in the city of Stanton. Fortunately, all three of those remained fairly small, but they did require, you know, significant responsive resources from OCFA as well as our partner agencies. Two of those fires, and they're actually, all three were fires. Two of them involved fires in storm drains, and then one was a structured fire response. The two storm drain fires occurred. When crews arrived on scene, they found debris in the storm, and really more or less under the overpasses. So crews were able to extinguish those pretty quickly without having to do a long, complicated, what we call a technical rescue or confined space response, where it requires a significant amount of resources added to those calls to take care of, so they're able to get to the fires pretty easily, and they're very accessible. And then there was one other incident, a little bit more of significance, that involved the property eleven two hundred Beach Boulevard. These are those vacant buildings and escapes right now. I'm sorry, the, the previous business, there was a steakhouse there. But there are some transient activity where an individual lit four separate fires on the exterior, two on the exterior of the buildings, and two in the vegetation underneath the bamboo trees that bordered the mobile home park. When crews arrived on scene, they, they had four separate columns of smoke showing. They immediately upgraded the response, requested additional resources. We had the assistance of Anaheim Fire Department as well as Orange County Sheriff's Department. The fires were kept relatively small and extinguished. The two fires on the exterior of the building, they did cause some minor extension into the buildings and caused some minor damage, but nothing too significant there. And I am pleased to report out that with the assistance with the OCFA Fire Investigators and Orange County Sheriff's Department, they did make an arrest for the, for arson for the cause of those fires. During the first, during the month of June, we were involved in a couple of different community and station events. On June eighth, Education Specialist Milton Mira gave a disaster emergency present, emergency present, preparedness presentation to community of Stanton at the Stanton Central Park. And then myself, but the on-duty battalion chief and crews from Fire Station Forty Six attended the Flag Day breakfast at the Roach Regarding Senior Living in the city of Stanton. This event was also well-attended by our partners, law enforcement partners of the Orange County Sheriff's Department, as well as Falkham. In the month of June, the OCFA concentrated, continued with our A B Cs of Water Safety and Firework Safety Campaigns. We've put out some public, through social media, some public service announcements regarding those events, as well as work. We also pushed out events regarding home safety, home assessment safety, balcony and deck safety, and then safety around patio covers. Our joint prevention program is in full swing during this time, as well as our firework safety tips. And I was happy to report that there is, over the Fourth of July holiday, there is no significant fires or incidents that occurred in the city of Stanton that caused any extensive damage or injuries. So I'm happy to report that. And also, once again, our partnership with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and our crews out there patrolling the streets, trying, we're doing our best to keep the community safe. As a reminder, you can visit our website at W W W dot OCFA dot org to reference all of our safety flyers that are printed in multiple languages, and those are, once again, available for the, any of the social media and websites that, for city of Stanton, to communicate these messages out to the citizens. And then for some upcoming events in October, August fourth, crews from Fire Station Forty Six, as well as our Education Specialist Milton Mira, will be participating in Stanton's National Night Out event, as well as the local battalion chief and myself as well. And so we're looking forward to that event. This concludes my report for the Orange County Fire Authority for the operational report for the month of June twenty twenty three, and I am available for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Chief, for the questions. Okay, Chief, thank you for that report. I, I did want to let you know that Juan came over to the barbecue for first responders and ate everything I had. Juan came over to the barbecue for first responders and ate everything I had, and he ate on your behalf, so I wanted to let you know that. Uh, the sheriff's department was there, and we all took a team picture, so that's, uh, that was very nice, and it was nice enough for them to take a break, uh, from what they were doing that evening, and stop by the house at the barbecue.
Well, I appreciate your, the hospitality and the open invitation to our crews, and also for sharing those photos that, um, I forwarded to, as well to our, um, OCFA media, uh, just for some additional social media campaigns. So we appreciate your support as, and your hospitality.
It's always nice to put stamps on the map for good things, so thank you.
Absolutely. You're very welcome.
Be safe and hurry home.
Will do. Thanks, sir.
But Chief Walters misses you, so. Yeah, here's where the stuff, I'll give you a, a report tonight. Hurry back. Okay, I think that's about it, right? Okay, anything, other business before us? Okay. Well, you got to get a note for your moms and dads and wives and husbands, as you actually are going home.